My name is Alan Archfield. I'm a current Columbia City High School senior and I'm here on behalf of the students in Mrs. Keener's Advanced Placement Senior English Class who are responsible for designing this evening's event. These students were tasked with researching the job of the school board, contacting and inviting all candidates, creating forum rules, creating the layout of this event, writing all materials, designing the media graphics, contacting media outlets, and hosting this forum. On behalf of the class, I would like to welcome you to the 2022 Whitley County Consolidated School Board Forum. I would like to take the time to recognize and thank all candidates for attending this event and allowing the community to become familiar with their aspirations and values regarding WCCS. Thank you as well to all the facilitators, officers, and all the public entities present at tonight's event. Finally, I would like to thank all the community members attending this event. We believe there is value in becoming informed about prospective candidates who will represent the children, parents, employees, and community members who are part of WCCS. Please note the handout which you were presented with at the door. We would like to direct your attention to the front page, which offers you Indiana voter information. The front page also highlights what Indiana deems as the purpose of the school board. On the following pages, you will find a photo of each candidate who RSVP'd for tonight's event, as well as a brief biographical statement made by each of those candidates. Finally, the pamphlet includes an area where you may take notes as the candidates speak. This is for your convenience and to allow you to highlight points made tonight that are of high importance to you as a voter. The goal of this event is to allow candidates to express their intentions and explain and define their views on topics related to the job of the school board. This event is also intended to educate the public about the purpose of the school board. Before we begin, we ask that you abide by the following audience guidelines for this event. This is not an audience participation event. Please also refrain from speaking as the student moderator or candidates are speaking. Please do not interrupt any candidate. Please be sure that all electronic devices are turned off and silenced during the forum. Refrain from any flash photography during the forum. Refrain from excessive exuberance for any one candidate and hold the applause until all candidates have spoken. As this is a student-led school event, anyone who is disruptive during this event will be taken by officers or administration to leave the venue immediately. The candidate rules, which candidates were given ahead of time, are as follows. Surrogates will not be allowed to participate in the forum in place of a candidate. No place cards, posters, stickers, or such campaign materials may be displayed by the candidates during the questions. Candidates may not use any type of technology during the forum. The student moderator will determine which questions are asked and enforce time limits on answers and responses. Candidates will be allotted two minutes for an introductory statement. Candidates will be asked three to five questions following introductions. Candidates will be allotted two minutes to respond to each question. The student moderator may interrupt if candidates exceed the allotted time. The candidates may not interrupt one another. It is the student moderator's responsibility and discretion, not the candidates', to enforce this rule. Candidates and the student moderator will remain in their designated position for the duration of the forum. We will ask all candidates' questions in varying orders so that the first candidate is not always required to answer the first question. The candidates have been provided with this order. At this time, we'd like to begin with candidate introductions. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and share what motivates them to want to become a WCCS board member, and something unique in their background or knowledge set that makes them a good fit to be a school board member for Whitley County Consolidated Schools. So, the first question of the evening is, please introduce yourself, share what motivates you to want to become a WCCS school board member, and something unique in your background or knowledge set that makes you a good fit to be a school board member for Whitley County Consolidated Schools. We will start with Mr. Malcolm.
I'd like to start off by... Great. I just, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Appreciate that. I really appreciate AP Lit for putting this on. I know it's a lot of work. My name's Mike Malcolm. I'm running for one of the positions, the Columbia City positions. There's two positions available. I'm a retired teacher. I taught for Wallace City Community Schools for over twenty years. Taught AP Bio, Craigmore Bio, and Middle School Science. I currently work for the Whitley County Health Department and late some measures inspector. You've probably seen my name around town if you've ever gotten gas or bought groceries. A little orange sticker. That's me. That's what I do.
Sir, could you please raise the microphone to your mouth so the audience in the back could hear?
Okay.
Is the microphone on?
Can you hear okay now? All right. I've been active in the community for a long time. I've lived here over thirty years. I was on the Columbia City Park Board for a pretty long stint, and then I just finished ten years on the Columbia City Tree Board. Okay, during my teaching career, I was lucky enough to work for some good superintendents and good school boards. Okay, and I saw that when you have a functional school board, it works its way downhill. Okay, positive energy would flow into teachers and students and parents, and it was really good. And I also had the misfortune of working for some not-so-good school boards and superintendents. Okay, and the results were just the opposite. Okay, I was also the chief negotiator for our Teachers Association for twenty years. And in doing that, one of the things I think really qualifies me for a school board, I've worked on school budgets. I've worked closely with boards and superintendents and went through all the budgeting items, okay, to try to get raises for teachers. I was always an advocate for teachers, okay, but at the same time tried to be fiscally responsible.
With that, we would like to move to Ms. Shively.
Excuse me if I get dry mouth here. So, my name's Heather Shively, and I'm also running for the Columbia City spot, one of them, with these gentlemen. And so, a little bit about me, I'm from Whitley County. I grew up actually just out in Miriam, so north of town. I went to Terrebusco, but I have made my home base here now. I was a teacher for nearly ten years in Whitley County Community Schools. At Little Turtle Elementary, I taught kindergarten for five years and first grade for four. And I was very involved as a teacher, very committed, loved my job. I was able to lead student council for several years, and in doing that, we did amazing community drives, such as we did a huge diaper drive for Babe, and we organized food drives and clothing drives, and just got actively involved that way with the community, because that's a passion of mine. And I don't know if you ever heard of the Countdown kindergarten program, but myself and several other teachers, we were kind of at the ground level in building that for kids coming into kindergarten who didn't necessarily have the experience of preschool that other kids have had. Maybe they just needed that extra support. So, we were able to build a program so for two weeks they come, and they just get to experience school and socialize before actual school, and they're overwhelmed. So, that was really special to me. And about two years ago, a year and a half, I started feeling like my voice wasn't being heard when I tried to advocate for my students and when I tried to advocate for my colleagues. So, by stepping away, I felt like I could use my voice in a better way in order to voice my concerns for my colleagues and also advocate for my students. So, I think that's unique, that... The end.
Yes, Mr. Smithers.
Good evening, and I know Mike said it, but thank you guys very much for hosting SAP Lit and the high school. My name is Brian Smithers, and I have been a resident of Whitley County for most of my life. I moved here in fifth grade, and no one's ran me out of town just yet, so that waits to be seen. I am married to my lovely wife Danielle for ten years, and we have two children. My daughter is nine, my son is four, so I will have two children in the district. I have a vested interest in seeing the district grow and succeed, so it can be a place where they can grow and thrive and be the best, you know, little people that they can be. In my professional life, I worked for Lincoln Financial Group. I am a tax-exempt and governmental plan consultant and a qualified 401K administrator. So, for something unique for me, I bring a wealth of knowledge about retirement plans in particular, and some of the things I've spoken with some of the teachers, that's something that's on their minds, how do we retain people? How do, you know, what's going to happen, you know, as I get older and I get ready to retire? Obviously, teachers have a pension, but there are other components to retirement aside from that. And I think I can bring a lot of knowledge to working to make the district's retirement plans better. And other things that I work on, or well, do in the community, I officiate swim meets at the YMCA. So, if you have a kid that is in swim at the Y, you will see me wandering around the pool, and you can feel free to yell at me and tell me I'm doing a bad job there. But, you know, at the end of the day, what I really want is a place for all of the kids of our community to have, a place where they are safe, and they can learn, and they can just give their all to grow and just, like I said, become the best people they can be.
And with that, we would like to move on to Mr. Schwire.
Can you hear me? Perfect. My name is Ronald Schwire, and my wife Erica and I moved into this district four years ago, and I've got a kindergartner at Little Turtle, a first grader at Little Turtle, and a thirteen-year-old on the autism spectrum. And we talk about what motivated me to want to run for this board. Our school lives by the motto "Better Together." And in the four years that I've been here, we've seen a lot of great community aspects and a lot of people that are together. And then you go to a school board meeting, and you talk to teachers, and you talk to parents, and you talk to school board members, and you realize, we're not doing what we're saying. We're not being better together as a community. We're not at each other's throats, but there's always room for improvement, and I want this community to be what I grew up in, in northeast Indiana, people that love and depend on each other and can rely on each other to be better together and give everybody a better future each day. Something that I think makes me unique to this position is, as I mentioned, I've got kids in the school boards, or in the school district. Right now, only one current sitting board member has kids that attend any of our schools here in Whitley County. I think that's a big deal, and I think it matters to have those kids in this school system, to make sure that I show up and fight every day for my kids and your kids and every member of this community. One unique thing that is different about me is I'm in the sales industry. I travel into factories and foundries, whether it be in the alloy industry, the construction industry, the concrete industry, the housing industry. I see people along all lives of work, that some have doctorate degrees and are CEOs and VPs, some are machine operators, some are janitors, some are, you know, engineers by trade. I get a broad spectrum of people that I deal with on a daily basis, and so I see the value of the educational spectrum from trade schools to degrees to just going straight into the workforce, and I want to help bring that back to our community to push all avenues, to make sure our kids have a better and brighter future, which benefits us all in the long run. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Shoda.
Hi, everyone. My name is Trenton Shoda. I have been a lifelong resident of Whitley County, except for a short few years when I lived in Fort Wayne. I graduated from Columbia City High School, went on and got my doctor of pharmacy from Purdue University, so boiler up to those Purdue fans. I apologize if you're an IU fan. But, I live with my beautiful wife and our two young boys, Owen and Reed, with one on the way, so pray for us in November. But that would probably be the number-one reason why I'm running for school board is because of my family. I just want to ensure that my son has a great future and a safe future in the WCCS school system. I currently now am a director of pharmacy, and not, or for the lack, for this, better of our students and our teachers and our community.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Dave Smith. I married into the community thirty-three years ago. My wife Joni is a teacher here at the high school at Eagle Tech. She's been in education for over twenty-five years. Our son and daughter both graduated from Columbia City, and our son via Eagle Tech and our daughter via the regular high school classroom experience. And that, I, it's given me a deep appreciation for how not all kids learn the same, and we need to provide them opportunities. If I had to sum up why I want to continue to serve as a board member, if I'd sum it up in one word, it would be service. I believe very deeply that we need to be of service in our lives, and that looks different for everybody. And that has led me to serve over the last thirty years on more than a dozen nonprofit and municipal boards. I would say, looking at all of those boards and all of those experiences, none has greater impact than our schools. Through that experience, I understand very clearly the role of a board. I understand the difference between governance and management. I understand the role of an individual board member. I understand financial oversight and the hiring of and healthy interaction with the superintendent. I've worked at Star the last thirty-three years, Star Bank. Currently serve as the market president. I understand the needs of the area businesses. I have extensive experience working with municipalities and nonprofits, and their very unique financial structure. I've managed teams large and small. I've put together... I've put together things I'll talk to you about later.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Is this on? Yes, okay. Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Schaefer, and I am your current school board representative for Thorn Creek Township, and I'm seeking reelection. Twenty-eight years ago, my husband Mark and I moved to Whitley County. We wanted to raise a family here because of the schools. We had heard great things about Whitley County schools. I moved from Huntington, I grew up in Huntington, my husband grew up in Fort Wayne, and this is where we decided we wanted to raise a family. So, our three kids came along, Hannah, Holden, and Mariah, and they embraced the public school experience, as did Mark and I. Through their high school opportunities, including music, science olympiad, and the internship programs, they have been able to be successful in their post-high school careers. Giving back to our community and our schools is highly important for both Mark and I. Mark is the current pole vault coach for the track team at the high school, and I have served on the board for the past eight years, as well as in the past being, you know, the homeroom mom, helping the teachers in the classrooms when the kids were smaller, until they wouldn't let me in anymore. When they went to middle school, they were too big for that. That was a really hard withdrawal, but it worked. And so, just being involved in the kids' activities has kept me involved in the community. Having served on the board for the eight years has given me an understanding of where we are as a district, where we have been, but most importantly, where we need to go. I've learned how to objectively look at issues and things that have come before the board in a fair and a comprehensive manner. I've gained the ability to work with other board members and administrators to hash out all parts of issues and understand it, and understand how our decision is going to impact the district today, tomorrow, but more importantly, in the future.
And then finally, Ms. Smith.
My name is Lindsay Smith. I'm a lifelong resident of Whitley County. I was a student here and a graduate. I moved back here after college with my husband, who also was a lifelong resident here. We have two children, Ella and Reese, who are in Whitley County Consolidated Schools. I've taught for Columbia City for fifteen years. I guess the main reason why I wanted to be able to serve is I was able to, for the last fifteen years, advocate for the kids that were in my classroom, and I want to continue to advocate for all kids in Whitley County. I believe in service for our community, and this is one way that I could use my voice outside of the classroom. As a teacher, while I was here, I was a teacher leader on a tech team and helped the district bring technology, implement new technology. I was part of the language arts team and wrote the curriculum. I was a lead teacher for the new teachers and was a mentor for teachers in this community in order to keep and retain teachers here. My husband is also into service as well for our school. He has coached the high school football team for the last thirteen years before our kids were even here. So, we've attended many activities and been involved in that way for our school. Outside of the community, my husband and I lead a life, led a life group for our church. We also did Wednesday night Iwanas for the children of our church, and currently co-lead the women's ministry at our church as well. Since I've left WCC, I have made sure to attend our school board meetings regularly, so I know what is happening.
And then with that, we'll move to our second question, please. One of the main responsibilities of a school board is helping a school remain fiscally responsible. What experiences specifically do you have that make you highly qualified for that portion of the job? Please also explain your understanding of this portion of the role of a school board member. We will start with Mr. Schwire.
So, in my role on the sales organization that we have, we're a multimillion-dollar company, and I'm responsible for my own budget, my own territory, my own expenses, while also getting the opportunity, because we have a very transparent company, of seeing what the day-to-day expenses are in regards to overhead, into vehicle expenses, into our healthcare, into our 401Ks. And so, I get to see that budget on a daily basis of how it ebbs and flows as the financial markets change, as gas prices increase or decline, and I'm held accountable to that budget. Part of my job review and performance is based off of how successful I am in keeping my budget on expectation, meeting the numbers I say I will, while not exceeding the costs that I've requested on my behalf to meet those numbers. So, while it's not on as large of a scale as what a school budget is of a district of this size, it gives me some firsthand knowledge of what some of that work entails and how every dollar really does count, and you've got to be conscientious of where that money goes and how it is spent. In regards to my understanding of the portion of the school board member's role in regards to the budget, our job is to approve and make sure that we are being fiscally responsible. We are not a rubber stamp for the superintendent to say yes every time they come forward with a request for money. It's to make sure that the money that's being asked for is going to the right programs that benefit our community and that align with what our community's goals are, to make sure that the money that we're spending is being used to make sure that we're meeting the state standards that are required for academics and not just pushing ideologies or agendas. It's making sure that our students come first and that the dollars associated with that serve them and the community taxpayer at large in a beneficial way that benefits the entire community as a whole. And so, that's the role of the school board, as the way I see it, is to ensure that we manage those dollars and make sure that we're meeting the expectation that our community has put forth. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Mr. Shoda.
As a pharmacy director in a very large, we're a corporate, a national corporation, I am in charge of the direct budget of the entire pharmacy, whether it be between the twenty FTEs, which is full-time equivalent people that I oversee, down to the medications that we keep in stock. So, I'm very aware of how to be fiscally responsible, how to monitor those, that inventory, and to stay within a budget that not only do I help put together, but also advise when that time comes. You said, you pretty much hit everything on the... I'll be honest with you, I'll be, you know, but I would, I'm gonna be honest, he did a great job explaining the role of the school board, so I'm gonna just say that I agree with what he said in regards to, you know, making sure that we're staying fiscally responsible, making sure that, you know, that money is going towards the right programs, the right, you know, towards students, and ensuring that we're not just putting money into something that doesn't need to be done at that time. I'm a firm believer that all of our schools should be Taj Mahals and should be the greatest places to go and learn, but at the same time, we have to be able to afford that. And we should also be thinking about our teachers and how are they, are they able to provide adequate supplies for their students and are they being paid equally? Or, what's the word I'm looking for? I apologize. Are they being paid, there you go, on par, or what they should be being paid? You know, they're the, one of the most important people in our children's lives, and saying that they don't deserve a substantial pay raise is probably something I will never vote against. I can tell you that.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I'll see if I can do better on time management this time. My experience day-to-day in my job, I work for Star Bank, currently the market president, and I work almost exclusively with businesses. I've done that for, worked there for the last thirty-three years. I've literally worked with hundreds of businesses in evaluating their operations and working with them as it relates to budgeting, evaluating revenues and expenses. I do work extensively with municipalities and schools, and so, and schools and municipalities have different financial statements than others, and they're not necessarily easy, as easy to understand. I have a lot of experience with that. I, I've now lost my place completely, so excuse me. In my job, I've worked with, with creating budgets there for a large region. I would say, if I want to point out... I would say, if I want to point out how I feel that the district has been handled fiscally, if we look back over the last four years, tax rates have remained level. Tax rates have remained within what was promised during the referendum. We've added a new Montessori school. We've raised teacher pay between 15 and 25%, depending on the individual's experience and where they started. We've performed $9.4 million in maintenance and renovations and improvements to our buildings, maintaining our assets the way we should. And again, maintained our tax level, our rate level. And I'm done. Thank you.
And then, Ms. Schaper.
Thank you, Dave. You've saved me some time explaining some of the things that we've done while we've both been on the board. So outside of my school board experience, I worked in the healthcare setting as a nurse, and then I ran my own business for 17 years. I had a case management business. So as far as financing and budgeting, I was in charge of all of that. I was a business of one. In my current position at a health insurance company, I have to have a very decisive manner, effective communicator, and very experienced in negotiations, as well as being in charge of my department budget as well. Being a board member over the eight years, we've outed our home a little bit more. We have been able to maintain our tax level through the building process and after. And that was something that we were very committed to when we went out and knocked on doors and got those yes votes and told the community, we are paying attention to every dollar that we spend. We, as a board, review and approve the expenses that are paid every month. So we get a detailed listing of every dollar that's spent. And we review, sometimes I will call Todd up and I'll say, I don't understand this one, can you explain that one? And I always get an answer that is acceptable. So it is very important that you do have a budget-minded mind when you're on the school board. We have looked for and supported many opportunities to save money because budgeting doesn't only mean monitoring and maintaining, but means finding ways to save money in some areas so that you can spend money in others, such as with teachers.
Better choices and making sure that we're making wise choices for our students and our district. So I may not have the background financially, but I do understand what it is that we need and what we don't need. I'm willing to work with the group of nine. We have a group of team members. We all have special talents and gifts, and I feel like that's my gift, that I'll be able to contribute to that board.
Mr. Malcolm.
I'm pretty much dialed in on the budgeting process. Like I said, I was our negotiator for 20 years for Teachers Association. Well, I ended up, I had a really good working relationship with our business manager, and so we would essentially work out the budget together. And the first thing we'd sort out, you have wants and you have needs. You got to pay for the needs first. One of the problems was always, the state was always changing the school funding formula. So you never knew from one year to the next how much you were going to get. So we would have to work with that. And I heard Marianne talk about the board packet. I used to go through those every month. Okay, I'd get it, I'd go through and I'd check all the expenses. I knew each account, you know, and I would question expenditures. I always tried to be fiscally responsible to the corporation. I never wanted to break the corporation. The state won't let you show a deficit budget. Okay, you can't overspend. They won't let you do that anymore. So we would work our way through, and then I would see how much was left for teachers. My goal was never to bankrupt a corporation. It was to be responsible. And we'd work on it, work on it. In some years, there was more, some years, there was less. Okay, I also served on the insurance committee, which is another big expense for a school, and that has to be worked into the budget. So altogether, you know, I've seen just about every facet of school funding. The only thing I really don't know much about is transportation. Okay, I was never involved in that, and I'm not sure exactly how that funding process works. Okay, I think every board member has to realize its limitations and its obligation to taxpayers. Okay, that's just, you know, and they need to make sure every revenue source is optimized, whether you look for corporate partners. If there are wants, you know, and you can't pay for them, you got to find a way to do it.
And Ms. Shively.
So I have never worked on a million-dollar budget. That's not my background. I don't work in a financial institution. But my mindset is always one of fiscal responsibility. I'm very proud of the fact that I'm debt-free, except for my mortgage. And I did it on a teacher's salary for 10 years. I think that's pretty good. And my friends will attest to the fact that I am very passionate about spending money wisely and planning for the future. And although the numbers are bigger, obviously, than my numbers on the budget, you know, like Lindsay said, we know what the school needs. We know what the teachers need, we know what the kids need. And so with that mindset, you know, he also said about, we don't know what money we're going to get. We get some one year, and the next we get less. And we already, our funds are already limited, right? Our resources are already limited. So what we have, we have to spend wisely, and we have to think about what's the best bang for our buck? What's going to affect the students the most, the most positively? So that's my, that's my financial speech.
Finally, Ms. Smith.
So the hard part about going last is I get to hear everybody's responses, and then so many people said all the good things I wanted to say, too. So in order to avoid going over some stuff, what I did want to say, you know, in terms of fiscal responsibility, any elected position, you are a steward of the public, right? The public's trust, the public's money. And as everyone said, I think everyone up here agrees we need to make sure we are spending things wisely. Like, what are the goals of our community? What is the goals, you know, of our school that benefits the most teachers, the most students? How do we arrive at win-win solutions? So that way, you know, we, okay, yeah, we had to spend money, but what did we get out of it? Did we get out, you know, are we getting out more than what we're putting in? Are there ways to structure, you know, funding or, you know, benefits? Like, I hate to go back to my own work, but like for retirement plans, is there a way to structure that so we're actually giving a greater benefit in the future for less input now? Those are some of the things that I think are important to look at and to, you know, revolve our thoughts around. And Heather kind of joked that, like, I don't work for a financial company. I don't manage million-dollar budgets either in my job. But, you know, what I do is I have a household that I have bills to pay at home, and I understand the concept of, don't spend more than you're bringing in every month. And I try to hit that, but then, you know, I always get that sick kid or something that ruins my best-laid plans. But, you know, I want to kind of bring that common sense, don't spend what you don't have attitude here as well, while still doing everything we can to create the best benefit for everyone.
All right, and with that, we will move to our third question. This question does have multiple parts, so feel free to pick and choose which parts you want to answer or don't want to answer. And with that, what are the benefits or detriments of school board censoring student choice reading, including choice reading books found specifically in the high school library or teacher classrooms? How would you like to respond to a parent who wants the district to limit access to or remove books from the school library or classroom? Or on the other side, parents who are pushing for more access to materials that may not be grade-level appropriate? As a fun bonus, what specific texts do you think should be required reading in high school classrooms? Maybe a book that influenced you greatly. We'll start with Mrs. Schaper.
Thank you. So censorship is a very slippery slope. We need to assure that there are age-appropriate books and literature available that is age-appropriate for our children. I support the opportunity for parent involvement and awareness of what books the children are reading. Certainly, the discussion should be between the parents and the children and the teacher if there is a dissatisfaction in what is being read. I experienced that myself. I was concerned about a book. My daughter actually was concerned about a book that she was reading and said, Mom, I don't think I should be reading this. So I looked at it, and I said, I don't think you should either. So I contacted the teacher, and we had a discussion. A different book was chosen. We went on our merry way. That was satisfactory to me. How would I respond to parents who are asking for books to be removed? I can actually tell you from experience, because I've been on the board for the past two years when we've been experiencing this. I listened. I listened to their concerns. I listened as they read portions of the book at the school board meetings. I questioned certain books that were in our library when they were brought to our attention. I read some of the books. I reviewed the policy and the procedures of how we are to handle books that are being questioned and books that are being asked to be scrutinized. And then I supported the work of the committee because we do have a policy and procedure in place for such events. That being said, I do believe that the most important aspect of all of this is communication. And I support fully having parents and their students be able to communicate with the teachers about the concerns that they have.
And next, Ms. Smith.
I do believe that certain books, that we need to be aware that there is age-appropriate at our home. So just having that open communication and being able to be transparent about what is that our kids are reading and allowing for that process to be in place so that we can review that through the book committee.
To increase their reading skills and their literacy skills. And if there's a problem, I've met very few teachers that if you called them, they won't work out an alternative solution. Okay, communication always has to be there. Okay, just to go in and blanket ban things because you don't agree with it, especially at a high school age. Censorship is not an effective solution to keeping information from an audience. It never has been and never will be. Just because you don't agree with something doesn't mean you shouldn't read it. You'll learn from that. And if you censor things and don't let the information get out, you're cheating these kids. Okay, from experience, I mean, they seek truth, they seek reason. It stretches their intellect, their intellectual capabilities, and it teaches them to become critical thinkers, which I think is what you want for all kids, to be able to think critically. They can read something and say, I don't agree with that, and they'll know why. If you're never exposed to it, how do you know you don't agree with it? That's all I got.
All right, and Ms. Shively.
I don't know how to follow all of that. I love all of these points. They all make great points. You know, different ages need different levels of appropriateness, and I think we do need to be aware of that and make sure that we're being appropriate for high school, middle school, elementary, and keeping those in line. And I also believe the parents do have a big voice in that. It's, as far as censoring as a school entirely, an example would be like, my mom didn't let me read Harry Potter when I was in school, much to my dismay. But she said, that's, we're not going to read that. It's not appropriate for your level. We're not about that. And I didn't until college. Don't tell her. Same thing, you know, we didn't do Halloween. So Friday afternoons before Halloween, when they were having a party, we went home. And there's kids who don't celebrate Christmas, and their parents make that choice. And it's about your values and what you believe. And as a parent, you have to be aware of what your kids are doing. Like Lindsay said, kids are on TikTok, kids are on listening to music, kids are on Instagram, and all of those things. They have access to many, many things. So to say just to censor books is not going to solve, is not going to solve a bigger issue. So as a whole, I think it's hard to put your value on an entire community, if that makes sense.
All right, Mr. Smithers.
When it comes to, you know, censorship outright, like Mike said, I think that that is a very dangerous slope because what I might deem inappropriate is not going to be what someone else deems inappropriate and vice versa. You know, so I think we have to be very judicious if we are going to, you know, if something comes to us to remove a book from the library, for example. It's like, well, there needs to be a good reason for it. I'm open to listening to it. I promise to do the reading myself and figure out, like, okay, here's what, I'm being told is objectionable. Okay, here it is, but what's this in the larger context, you know, of the reading itself? Is there actually a great point being made? Just happens to be an objectionable passage, for example? Everyone so far, I think, has pretty much mentioned, you know, a value, like kind of a value system. Everyone has different values. Everyone has different beliefs. And everyone's values aren't going to align all the time. So, you know, what is good for, you know, what I think is good and appropriate for my kids? You might think I'm being too, you know, I'm being too permissive. I might, you know, I might think that way about someone else. So how do we address this? I think it really, everything kind of exists along a continuum, right? Just because something's maybe inappropriate for elementary age doesn't mean it's not appropriate for maybe middle school. It's just trying to strike that right balance of, you know, I'll say, right reading in the right place. And I always want to err on the side of not removing something just because I believe of the dangerous precedent it sets. I do want to answer the bonus question, though, about, I wanted to say, what work influenced me greatly? Maybe if I want to say my favorite book. I remember being in like sixth, seventh grade, and at the middle school library, I picked up a copy of The Lord of the Rings. And I absolutely loved that book, and I can, you cannot believe how excited I was when it actually got made into a movie. I remember being in the movie theater, and the preview came for it. I was so stoked.
All righty, and Mr. Schwaier.
And here I thought I was going to be the first one to bring up. That's where I'm going to start, is the book that influenced me greatly. Fahrenheit 451 by Ray Bradbury. I picked up my sophomore year in Mr. Lyons' class, and he would love the shout-out, and it has stuck with me every day ever since. If you haven't read it, I highly recommend it. Fahrenheit 451 is the temperature at which books burn. And the premise of the book is on the basis of censorship and burning all books because books are bad. A firefighter decides that that doesn't align with his core values, and he starts to fight the good fight to stop burning books because without them, we've got nothing. Fantastic book, and it helps set the premise on where I feel about this question as a whole. Censorship is not the answer. We have local libraries, we have the internet, we have TikTok, we have so many other things. Somebody wants to read or find something, they're going to, whether it's in our school library or whether it's in the public library or on the internet as a whole. But I do agree that there needs to be educational value and age appropriateness. And that's where I draw the line. If a teacher believes that a book's necessary, that's fantastic. Let's have that conversation. Let's find out why that book is so vital to meet the state standards that we're all striving for. If we can justify that book, then that's an argument that can be made. That's a communication and a conversation can be had with the parents and the community as a whole. At the same point, there should be opportunities to opt out, and there should be a willingness to take into account what our community values are and what we feel isn't appropriate. I'll never believe in censorship, and without discussion and without people having a difference of opinion, we all become into group think, and that's not beneficial as a whole. And so that's where I'd like to see open communication and age appropriateness, but also understanding that there are other ways to get those texts if we remove them from our libraries because we are blessed with a public library and other avenues of that censor, of those options. So communication and open dialogue.
All right, and Mr. Shoda.
Well, I'm going to piggyback on what a few others have said. It is a clear slippery slope censorship, and I will agree with Ronald that I'm against it entirely. I believe that if we probably all sat down and each read the same book, we could probably each have a different opinion on what is okay, what is not okay. And I think that's what, you know, not to get political, but that's what fuels us as Americans. We, you know, we have that freedom to have those opinions. We, you know, we have that freedom to have those opinions and we can share those opinions. There should be a way for a family member to opt out if they choose that book goes against those family values. I entirely agree with that. But at that same time, we don't want to have some, a book that is beneficial to all the other students not be allowed for those students. I just, like I said, everybody kind of hit, I just feel like I'm beating a dead horse at this point. But I am against censorship. I believe, again, there should be an avenue for opting out of a book that a family feels is inappropriate. But at the same time, I put, I took AP Lit with, I think it was Mr. Lau. Okay, it's been a while. But I read plenty of books that, there were a few passages where I was like, okay, this is not questionable, but to the point where I thought, I didn't know this would be in a book. But at the same time, I, my parents were, you know, they had those discussions with me, we talked about it, or I just was, you know, open enough to understand the bigger picture. And that's what you, that's what we should be teaching our children is, look at the bigger context. Because at that same moment, if we just look at one little passage, that's what happens with false information.
All right, and Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Reading is foundation of learning. I don't know that there's really anything else that is more important than reading. I don't support censorship, that's a very strong, strong word. And I think a lot of times when that's used in this context, people are talking about that age appropriate piece. Some people probably are talking about censorship, but I think a lot of people are talking about, do we have the right books in with the right students? And, you know, I'm not in a position to make that determination myself. And as everyone has said, people have different value sets. People, and I respect those, but we are a public school. And that's why we have a process. That's why people can appeal to have a book removed. And that process is taken very seriously. And they are asked to put effort into that to show specifically why they feel it needs to be removed. And then there is a committee that reviews that. And so it's not one member that makes that determination. It is a group that represents our community that makes that determination as to whether a book will remain or not. And I agree with everyone that we can head down a real slippery slope and to truly benefit our students and our community as a whole, we have to make certain we don't do that. But we do still need to remain diligent to make certain that what our, the experience that our children are having is a positive and productive one.
And then with that, we also constructed individual questions for each of the candidates, and we would like to move on to those.
On that note, what I'll go ahead and do is I'll share the fourth question that we also constructed, and we will let the candidates choose from their personalized question or that fourth question. I will go ahead and share the fourth question first. So, "Our high school has recently been awarded a $3.3 million grant intended to fund school transformation. What might transformation at the high school level look like to you?" All right, and following that, we will start with Michael Malcolm. You can choose from that or your question, which is, "What are the most important lessons that you learned as a secondary educator that you want to bring to your role as a school board member if elected?"
I guess the most important lesson I learned as a teacher was that every kid was an individual. They were all different. And you had to do different things to motivate them. And I think it would be the same one on the school board. You have to work with all these other people. Listening is an essential skill, just like I had to do with students, you had to listen. I made accommodations for students. I had, every kid that had an IEP, I took them, okay, and taught them biology. And, I mean, maybe a kid is tactile learner, maybe one kid is visual, one's oral, one likes to read. I made sure every bit of information was available to every learner, every learning style. Okay, and I think there's several teachers up here, we all did that. You have to, otherwise a kid gets left behind, and that's not fair. Okay? You advocate for kids, and I think as a school board member, that won't change. Even though I'm not a teacher anymore, I'd be on the school board, I'd still be an advocate for kids. Okay? If not us, who in the school? Okay? If we're going to control all the money, all the programs, it's got to be about them. Okay? And nothing else. That's all I got.
Fair enough. Ms. Shively, your question is, "If you are elected to the school board, how will you ensure that your voting record and policy decisions are indicative of the larger community you serve?"
That is a very hard question.
Once again, you may choose between that and question four.
Pass, no. I just think that communication is so important between parents and teachers and between teachers and school boards and school board and superintendent, teachers and superintendent. We all want to do what's best for the children of this community. I mean, that's why we're here. We wouldn't be here if we didn't care about it. So as far as ensuring that my voting record follows the larger community, I suppose it's just about talking to people and sitting down with people. I'm committed to finding the balance and bridging the gap, right, between the sides, between the sides. You know, we all want the best for the kids and we've got to be able to find a way to do it together. So yeah, talking to parents, talking to the community, talking to the students. I still am in communication a lot with parents of kids that I've had, and they still call me for questions or, you know, for advice even, students that I've had, or I just love seeing in the community. And when I see them, I always ask how school is and what's going on. So I think that's important to think about, too, because ultimately it is about them and their input matters to me, too. So I guess talking and communicating and being open to listen and have healthy discussion and healthy debate, that's what I got. Really bad ending.
All right. Mr. Smithers, your question is, "Your campaign materials state that quality teacher retention and attraction is one of your main priorities. With a teacher shortage across the country, how do you intend to attract and retain the best teachers at WCCS? Are you aware specifically of what positions have been the most difficult to fill within the district? What are your specific thoughts on those?"
I'll take the personal question. Oh, that's how it feels, it's game show time. So yes, as the question said, you know, teacher traction or attention, I think is one of my main priorities. And how to do that, though, ends up being the much harder question. As people stated, like we stated back in the fiscal responsibility question, we, our budget is finite, it is limited. And so how do we, how do we do something for someone when we can't really just back the Brink's truck up to their house? No one's brought it to my house yet, I'm still waiting. But are there ways to tinker around the edges to make things more attractive? Like, I know, I feel bad, everything keeps running back to like retirement plans for me, but I look at it as, we are competing not just for other teachers in other school districts in other states, we are competing with the private sector. There are jobs out there that, you know, teachers are certainly well qualified to do, and if they are offering, you know, better pay, better benefits, you know, better, you know, retirement plans, they might be very well tempted to go take that. It's about their personal, you know, life. You know, it's a business decision that's being made best for them. So kind of going further on, so what positions are, you know, we having trouble filling? I don't know, is this, might qualify, but something I've heard a lot from some of the teachers that spoke, and of course, everybody probably saw the sign when they were walking in, there's a sub shortage right now. So if anybody wants to be a substitute teacher, you can be a substitute teacher and help all of our great kids out. But, you know, because we're having trouble filling, you know, sub roles, our related arts teachers are covering other classes, our teachers are losing their periods, and that just has this negative downstream impact where, you know, yeah, they might have had to take papers home and grade them before, instead of maybe being one night a week, now it's every night a week because they're losing their, you know, part of their workday. They're having to do, you know, work for hours outside of their contract. And I think we need to do something about that.
Mr. Smithers, your personalized question is, Mr. Schwer, my apologies. "Your campaign materials state that you plan to focus on academic issues and specifically not social issues. Maslow's hierarchy of needs indicates that students need food, security, and a sense of belonging in order to learn the best of their, to the best of their ability. How do your ideas on avoiding social issues in the classroom support or refute this theory?"
That's a doozy. I'm going to try and shoot for extra credit if I can with Mrs. Keener, and I'm going to try and answer both, the personal question and the other one kind of combined here. I agree, and I'm adamant that academics are what matter. I couldn't tell you the political affiliations of my teachers in school, whether I was in elementary school or in high school. I could not tell you what they believed in their day-to-day life outside of maybe a few that I was incredibly close with, other than that they wanted me to come to school, to work hard, to put my best foot forward and do the job that was required, which was the educational material. I agree, kids need food, security, and a sense of belonging. That's part of the reason why I ran. We have teachers running for school board instead of teaching my kids. Fantastic teachers at that. We've got a great community of teachers. That's part of the reason why I wanted to run. I want my kids to know they're safe when they go to school. There's enough scary things in the world today that when my kids are inside the walls of the school system, that's a happy place. That's a place they want to go every day. And every day, my kids wake up with excitement. They're young, that could always change, but I hope that continues. I'm blessed that they've had great teachers so far. But when we talk ideology and we talk about big city ideas, you know, California, New York, even Marion County in Indianapolis, I'm sure they're great places. They're not Whitley County. Their values are different from our values. We've all talked about values here. I believe that part of our job as school board members is to ensure that we're taking into account our values. We have to push the academics. You can push any ideology you want on a child, and if they don't have the foundation of academics, they're going to struggle in life and they're going to be dependent on government assistance, potential parental help for life. And so I'm adamant that we do want to push more on an academic approach and less on an ideology, and that that's what really benefits our kids. And I didn't get to question four, so no extra credit awarded tonight, but thank you.
All right, Mr. Shoda, your personalized question is, "In what ways have you previously shown your stewardship to the Whitley County community? How often have you attended school board meetings or attended school activities and events?"
When I first graduated from pharmacy school, I, and this is me where, this might be where you recognize me, so I apologize in advance if you didn't have good, fast, quick service, but I was the staff pharmacist at Kroger Pharmacy here in Don, and I worked as a technician through pharmacy school. But when I graduated, the opportunity came, I don't know if you go to the Kroger Pharmacy, but Robert Sossman retired and everybody loved him. And the opportunity presented itself to come back and, you know, help with the health care of my hometown community, and I jumped on it. It wasn't the pay that I thought I was going to get, but it was in my hometown and I wanted to try to at least influence the, you know, the number one, what, number one issue most of the time is healthcare. That has been the biggest stewardship that I gave back to my community. Now I have moved on to other avenues, but I still, you know, I still have those values. I still, I took an oath when I graduated, when I put, or actually before I graduated, I put a white coat on, and I took that oath to always put my patients and others before me. And so I will always do that, especially in this role. I will always put the team or the children, the students, the families, the community ahead and have that at my forethought because at the end of the day, that's what's most important. How often have I attended school board meetings? I would, I can't say that I've attended every single one, but I have attended some. And events, were regular attenders of the football game. You know, I see there's one going on right now, I believe it's JV, if I'm not incorrect on that one. But I love going to sporting events. I've introduced my son to many sporting events. I will say that I'm not the most athletic person, but, and I would like for him to do something inside. But that is how I view him back to my community.
All right. Mr. Smith, your personalized question is, "What is the hardest thing you've had to deal with as a school board member so far and what have you learned from it?"
I would tell you, I'd love to answer question number four, only because it's so exciting. To give you a summary of my answer to question number four, so I can move on to my personalized one, is, this grant should be transformational enough that we should hope that it does not help us meet our current dreams, because we should be dreaming that much bigger. So exciting things to come on that. I would tell you this, the last 12 months has been really tough being on the board. I assume many of you, if not all of you, have seen what's going on at the meetings. And I'm not a politician, okay? And my wife will tell you that I take things personally. I struggle with it. And when I look back, you know, I think we have those, we have people coming in some cases from outside our community that I, that I think are pushing their own agenda. And I think that if there's something I've really learned from it, though, I think that oftentimes those within our community, we haven't done a good enough job of providing the information that they need. I've never worked with an organization that said, hey, everybody knows everything that they should know about us. Everybody says, if you just knew what we were doing. And we need to do a better job of that. That would alleviate some of that pain that we're seeing. And information without context is not nearly as valuable. You know, I have seen, and I understand the concern, where when we look at some of our test scores, they're saying, well, 60% of our kids are not passing, 60% are failing. You have to put a little context around that and understand that we are at or above the state averages.
Thank you. All right, and then with that, Mrs. Schaefer, your personalized question is, "Can you tell us about one thing that you are most proud of in your work as a board member?"
Thank you. Supporting our district leaders, teachers, kids, families, fellow board members through the unprecedented COVID pandemic and the response that we were on the fly required to provide at this district. I can't say enough about our leadership and our teachers who put time and energy into developing programs so that our kids could continue to learn while at home. And that was no small feat. So my greatest accomplishment should have been the building of this fantastic place where we're sitting tonight, but I have to be a little bit more current than that. have to be a little bit more current than that and celebrate the fact that we made it. It wasn't pretty and it wasn't always popular, our decisions that we had. But that's the responsibility of a board. It's not to be popular. It's not to be lie everybody. It's to do the right thing. And that's what I feel like we did and that is a great accomplishment. I'm going to piggyback really quick on something that David was touching on, and that is the scores. So celebrating our students' accomplishment is fantastic and we love it. Reviewing that data in context is what Dave was starting to talk about. And when you see numbers being thrown out there and you're thinking, how are our children doing this bad in school? Please look at the data. Look at the data sets. Because where you might be seeing a 40% pass rate, that's horrible. We're actually maybe three points ahead of what the state average is. You can't compare it on 100% scale. So look at that data. Do not just take a, a segment that somebody's putting out there and take it as true. Look at the data. Click on those links and really look. Do we have work to do? Absolutely. Am I excited about the work that we're going to be doing? Absolutely. Lori Huer has a fantastic program. Darn it, I'll tell you later.
All right. Ms. Smith, you are running a co-campaign with another former elementary teacher. How important do you think diversity of ideas and experiences among the various board members is?
I touched on this a little bit earlier, that, yep, I am running with a former elementary teacher and our background is in elementary. We are going to, we're going to be one of nine on that board. We are going to collaborate with these board members. Schools function best when we are collaborating. And so that means with students, with teachers, and with administrators and the, the members of the board, we're going to work together to hear all sides of everything, to be able to hear, have a table, a place at the table for everyone. Not just for certain, certain people, but being able to listen, understand, being diligent to collect facts and to solve hard challenges that we have ahead of us. As a board member, I will be focused and goal driven on keeping the students at the heart of every decision that we make. Because if that's, I think that's lost in this current environment. And so making sure that, my promise is that I do believe that we have to have diversity of ideas and having a place at the table for everyone to have their voice be heard, not my perspective. And so I will lean on those other board members in order to hear what they have to say and so that we can make the best decisions for our children, with our children at the heart of everything that we do.
All right. And with that, I would like to conclude this evening's event. Once again, I would like to extend my thanks to everyone for attending tonight's event. This was a three-week endeavor that was arranged by our class with the intent to inform the public about prospective candidates. At this time, I would like to dismiss the public. Have a great rest of your evening.